No, I think that was it. We only need to do it for this. Although it's faster.
Mayor, we're ready, thank you.
Okay, we're now ready. So I'm going to call the study session to order. We've had a roll call. First item is clarification for items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Diggle.
Great, glad we got through that. Item three, I was going to ask this evening, I appreciate a staff report. It's perhaps long overdue that we're changing our approach to managing our oil resources. But I was interested in what the new approach is going to be. Thank you.
You. Mr. Hen.
I have nothing.
Mr. Selich. No items. Councilmember Gardner.
On item number seven, which seems like a nice thing to do, we're getting more money and spending less. But do we have, are we confident we have projects that qualify so we're not buying credits that we can't use then at some point?
Yes, thank you. We actually have several projects and we brought to you four of them several months ago. And we're going to be bringing back the Bowe-Bowel Boulevard project for formation of Rule 28 to get that started. So there are projects on the books we can use that for.
And then on number 10, it's a pretty big discrepancy in the price we're getting from the one company that we awarded it to. Are we confident that this is, we're not going to be looking down the road and then saying, well, we underbid it and it's a long contract?
Good evening. Yes, Councilmember Gardner, we sent out a notice to all the folks that sent proposals in. And just to make sure that they did reread the RFP, the scope, firm that their price was final and everyone responded, Houston and Harris responded in fact that yes, they did refer to the scope. They're well aware of what the job is and they're firmed up with that price. So we're confident that that's a price that they're going to go with. Compared to the others, they are lower, so that's, I still think that's a good price.
Thank you.
Mr. Petros.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On that item, I had that very same question of Mr. Murdock received that. So I will be very confident that we will not be seeing change orders from Harris PCS in the future. As relates to item number six, though, this seems to be in line with our overall objective of outsourcing those services that are more, will give our staff more time to do other items. I wanted to just make sure, though, that the $362,000 was an amount that is rationalized based on the fees, the rate structure of the consultant, and what is actually anticipated in their work.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Petros. I'm Kimberly Brant, Community Development Director. When we prepared our budget estimate for this fiscal year, we anticipated that we would need two full-time building inspectors at an approximate cost of $130,000 per inspector in order to meet our current demand for building inspection activities. We have, as you can just notice around town, an increased level of building activity that demands a certain level of customer service. And then we also anticipate that we will need additional plan check services and we estimated that need at $100,000. Again, it's a reflection of the current activity in the city related to development.
That's full-time, full-time activity?
It's not quite full-time on plan check services. Again, it's a fee recovery where the applicant is paying a fee to review the plans and, but they, for accounting purposes, they come in as a revenue versus an expense. So we anticipate it will cost us $100,000 in outside plan check resources. And that's opposed to hiring a full-time plan check engineer.
Thank you, Ms. Brant.
Mr. Hill.
Excuse me. Item number 11, our new contract for on-call streetlight electrical repair services. I noticed within the agreement that we require a one-hour response time for emergencies and they have an address of being in Riverside, California. Number one, do we pay for travel time? And number two, how will they deal with that one-hour response time during peak traffic time?
Good evening, Mr. Councilmember Hill. Yes, the company itself is, the corporation is located in Riverside. However, their street lighting firm is, that just handles streetlights, is based out of Anaheim. Under the contract provisions for on-call for that company, their employees must be within the one hour of the city Newport Beach. So although their typical response time has been much less than one hour, they are required to respond. But the folks that are on-call after hours for the international line builders are, live in close proximity to Newport.
And then do we pay for travel time?
No, we don't.
Thank you. And I have no clarification, so we'll move to the July 4th update.
Good evening, Mayor Curry and council members. I'm going to talk to you about two 4th of July events that we had on the 4th. And the first thing I want to do is talk about, the 4th of July is for families. And the very first thing that should be done is to thank our committee. It's been a pleasure to work with such a grassroots effort to try to change the culture of the 4th of July to make it fun for everybody. So I did want to thank our committee, Richard Berstrom, who is here today, Sharon Bowles, who's also here. Also on our committee were Mary Bryant, Cindy Kohler, Lori Morris, Jim Miller, and Joel Stapleton. And they worked very hard to get everything together for the event to partner with us and we appreciate that. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the Police Department and Municipal Operations for doing the street closures and keeping the event safe for us as well. So we had our event and we all lined up and we got out there at about 8:45 and about 9 o'clock, everybody comes out of the woodwork about 8:55. And we walked down the street and I also want to thank the council members who came out and participated in that. And then we walked down the street towards the park. That computer, next. And at the park, we had lots of activities that you can see there. They were lots of fun. And a former council member going in the tank there, which, you know, that's always a lot of fun, going in the dunk tank. So this was a great event. And again, thanks to the committee for all their involvement, to our sponsors. And then next, and then the next event we had, our 41st Annual 4th of July up at Mariners. And it's, and this event is done in cooperation with the Mariners School Foundation. And this event, a couple more people, about 3,500 people at this event. And I also want to thank the mayor for coming and helping out with that event and Mayor Protem Rushhill and also doing the welcome. And there's Piper Evans, she was our grand marshal this year, next. And also thanks to the sponsors that were a part of this event who make it happen and to the foundation. So, excuse me, if there are any questions, I'll take them at this time. If not, the next part of the day is the PD part of the presentation and Deputy Chief McGill will be giving that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, did you do that or did I? Okay, I'm going to get you again. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Curry and council members. David McGill from the Police Department. And I think from our perspective, it was a very successful year. And if I had to sum it up in one photograph, it took me a long time to find this photograph and he's not even here to appreciate it, but this is the photograph I think sums up our efforts in this year. That typifies what we went through this year, but go ahead and hit it again. We got one step closer this year to the family-friendly holiday that we're all looking for. And I think you'll see as we go through some of the stats and some of the other information here that you'll agree that we're still going down this path. We have a long way to go for it to be perfect, but we're getting closer as we, as the years go by. As you remember, if you remember when I was here before you last time, our enforcement philosophy was that we were going to be more mobile and flexible, more agile. We were going to have fewer outside personnel, which we did, about 16 personnel fewer than we did last year. More motors and bicycles and horses and a better camera system. We determined this to be a successful deployment of our resources. Our operational plan, we identified the party houses in troubled locations early, which we did. We educated and informed the public, which we did. We were assertive and professional throughout the event, which I'm pleased to report. And of course, the biggest thing is that Seashore and Bowe-Bowel were open to the public and we wanted to reduce costs, which we did significantly.
Chief, did we have fewer party houses that we had to identify this year? I mean, is the, is that?
Well, it's hard to quantify. We had one Lugo that was written that I'll talk about in a little bit. And there's a debate even among our circles whether or not our enforcement posture was at a level that, you know, are we letting down a little bit? Are we not aggressive enough? Personally, I think that we were equally aggressive as we were this year, as we were last year and the year before. I think the numbers of party houses have decreased. The amount of people still seems overwhelming to a lot of us, especially when we opened Seashore, it was just impacted significantly. And we don't want to go backwards. We don't want to have any kind of barriers or barricades set up. So we're going to work on, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, but I can't give you an answer for that because, and I'll show you some call, call load factors that go into showing a decrease in the number of parties reported, whether that's an indicator or not, I'm not sure. It's just real hard to quantify. Recap the events, of course, it's always nice to start off with a parade. Everybody loves a parade. It gets us off to a good start. This year, we saw that the sun came out a little bit earlier than in years past. The crowds developed a lot earlier, made us a little bit, a little nervous. In fact, we were in one of our briefings when probably one of the more significant disputes broke out on 32nd and the beach and we had to roll out some officers to handle that. And those were the first few arrests of the day. Fire department estimated there was 125,000 or so folks on the beach. I think on Seashore, there was probably close to 200,000. I'm just kidding, but it just, it seemed like it was a lot of folks there. For the statistics for this year, we're up slightly in the number of arrests. We're down a little bit in personal citations and that may be a factor of how many officers that we had. We did have less, fewer officers. Parking citations went up a little bit and like I said, we have one Lugo. Probably the most significant thing in terms of financial numbers, we were down, our total costs this year were about $62,000 outside costs. And that's where the numbers really fluctuate. The static numbers are the cost to put on the event and the overtime for the officers. But the outside agencies supplying our officers cost us money and of course, we were significantly less than last year and that's a real good number for us, about half, to be honest with you. So 50,000 less than what we budgeted, which is very, very significant.
Do you recall if last year's number was also down from the year before that? It was, yeah. Okay.
All right. Terms of arrests, just some information for you. Obviously, the males outnumber the females significantly. And you can see the age categories. Obviously, our youngsters, 18 to 20 are our most frequent flyers. And about, average age is about 24 and that age category, 18 to 24, both those categories comprise about two-thirds of our arrests. The oldest arrestee, just in case you're interested, is 58 years old. He'd like to have a good time.
Chief, wait, can you go back to that?
Yes.
What gender are the other eight percent? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll get back to you on that. That might be a typo. Area of residence, this is always interesting to us. We've known intuitively that the folks that get arrested don't normally reside in our city and that proved out in our statistics. Only 12% were here. What's interesting is that two-thirds were really, other than outside of Irvine, Huntington, Costa Mesa, other Orange County cities, other counties, and even out of state. So a very significant number of folks are outside of our area, come in and like to have a good time and then don't go along with the program.
Could it, could there be a possibility that that's reflective of the envelope of our communications? In other words, are they outside of the information that we share about, come here and screw up and you'll get hit?
I think the numbers are consistent over the years. They may fluctuate a little bit, but traditionally, there are always outsiders coming in. It might, how to reach those folks, I understand what you're saying, to educate them is a challenge for us. We do the best we can. We've got this next alert, of course, and we've got advertisement. But we really, you know, what's really helped in the last few years are the rental companies and the Lugos. They have really done a remarkable job educating the renters about our laws. It's the visitors that come in and crash the party.
Do we know of the out-of-city 66%, how many were being housed in Newport or how many were coming in just for the day?
I don't know that intuitively. If anybody has anything to add, you see the streams of folks coming in for the day and then the streams of folks leaving. So just anecdotally, I would say they just come in for the day. It's like the place to be in, like the old days where Palm Springs or someplace else, it's the place to be on 4th of July.
That might be a statistic that would tell us that we should look for a broader spread of where we place our pre-holiday information now.
Yes, sir, I made a note and we'll look into that. But next slide. Probably not a surprise to most folks that people imbibing too much or the higher number of arrests, coupled with assaults and the drugs, those three comprise about three-quarters of all of our arrests. And those are just the top five, but obviously, it's the drinking, the drugs, and the fights that develop from that. This is kind of interesting and it goes to the party calls that Councilmember Hen alluded to. In the last, these are the last four statistics, four years' worth. In terms of, these are calls for service or calls coming in to dispatch. The overall number of calls and the period is from about 6:00 in the evening on July 3rd through 6:00 in the morning on July 5th. So that's traditionally the way we capture these statistics. The numbers of calls in our CAD, that our CAD captures and our dispatch captures remains relatively stable, plus or minus a few dozen. And that's the same for this year. You can see in the last four years, the number of party calls, people calling and saying, hey, there's a party at this such-and-such a location, has decreased dramatically. So that's an indication in my mind that there are less parties, maybe people paying attention a little bit more to Lugos. And I will touch on Lugos in the end, again, whether or not we're taking a real hard look at that. We might want to, and we will in the next year or so, take a look at Lugos and are we doing everything we can to ensure that our officers are actually writing them when they're supposed to be written. But Lugos also have dropped off significantly. The interesting thing is the firework calls have increased. Other than 2011, if you look back in the last several years, it's about 70 to 80 calls a year, pretty consistently. 2011 was a little bit unusual and so was last year. Last year it went up. And I'll talk about fireworks at the end of the presentation.
Is there a geographic sort of a printout of where the Lugo calls are coming from? I mean, there's one now. Given that they're, it's a citywide ordinance and I just want to make sure we're being balanced about our response.
Well, that's what I'm going to talk about at the end of the presentation because I think we can do a better job balancing the city. Obviously, we focus on the safety enhancement zone, but there's some interesting calls that are being noted and there's also some emails going out about fireworks in particular, but about other calls on the other parts of the city. And we don't want to neglect the other part of cities and I don't think we do. But we want to take a look at that to make sure we're doing everything we can to give service to the other folks in the city that deserve it. So that goes along with what we're trying to do for next year to balance that out a little bit.
It, are you done? The, you know, the newspapers and whatnot, they focus on the number of arrests this year and last year. To me, that's really not a meaningful statistic. This is a meaningful statistic to me in looking at the calls for service for parties. That's a huge change over the three years of change that you've got there. And so that to me is the best indication that we're really making a difference now with how people conduct themselves. The, just on the issue of the Lugo, just so you know, in my personal opinion, I don't have a view of how many Lugos we should be issuing. Seems to me it could be zero and that could be fine, too. I don't, I know you need to look at it, you need to be careful that you haven't changed your enforcement posture in some way, in some unintended way. But if the issuance of fewer Lugos is an indication that people are behaving themselves better, that's okay with me. I don't think we need to worry about keeping up the number of Lugo issuances. It's, it just needs to be based on the requirement, that's all.
Yes, sir, I agree with you and it's just, last week, we had a debrief in our, for our management and command staff and we talked about some of these issues. But Lugo in particular, there is some discretion involved in it. Doesn't, we don't have to cite a Lugo violation. We do cite for DAX, the Disturbance Advisory Cards that we give out. So it is, there are some, there is some discretion involved, there is some judgment involved. And quite frankly, I think it's more of an indication when the officers arrive at a call where there's a loud party, they send a message, they educate on the first go-round. And if that seems to solve the problem that the people get the message, then we move on. We don't necessarily have to jump on them right away. So I agree with you and I like that number, I like it going down, but we just, in an effort to just make sure we're doing the right thing, I want to make sure that we look at that. So things that went well, got a lot of comments unofficially on talking to the community members about this has been one of the best years ever and it was a very mellow crowd. We did not have any official complaints to the Police Department as of today and we didn't have any injuries to our personnel, which is very good. I know the fire department was real busy. They responded to at least 46 medic calls, medical emergency calls in our area. But in terms of what I mean by all-city department cooperation, as Sean alluded to too, we're just one department here. We seem to get a lot of attention, obviously, and so does the fire department. But take, for example, the MOD, Municipal Operations. It's incredible how much they've done and they do the day before or the week before and the day or two afterwards in terms of setting up barricades, signs, all those issues and picking up trash. It's just amazing. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, they set a record on that following Monday for how much trash they picked up in the city of Newport Beach just from the residents. So they have a great component here. Everybody works together to pull this thing off and we're just not alone. I just wanted to make sure that gets mentioned, that a big thank you goes to them as well. Things that can be improved, we, the crowd management on Seashore, of course, this is the first year in a long time that we opened Seashore and a lot of our colleagues here on the Police Department aren't used to that. It's been closed for so long. So it was a sight to see and that was, when you see that, it's a little bit intimidating. So our officers had to get used to that many folks in one place. And we're going to look at how we manage that. And we've already talked about changing some of the things we do to improve that effort to try to keep as best we can that Seashore drive open, which is going to be very challenging, but we're going to take a look at that. Everybody likes the mounted, we love the mounted, they're a great tactical resource and they're great PR for us. We tried real hard to recruit some volunteers, which we did, they were fabulous, they were there, ready to go. But we found very quickly that we can't get them into all the areas that we need to just because of how many folks are there and how many people we had to deal with. So we got to rethink that. How do we do a better job on picking up after the horses if we can? So that's going to be a challenge for us as well. For the folks that are down, were down there that day, the cellular service was pretty bad. Not because the equipment failed, it was just because there was too many people. That did affect us to a certain extent. Our communication, of course, was fine. We were able to communicate, there was no problem. Some of our equipment operates out of the cellular service sites and that impacted us to a certain extent. We're going to change that next year, that shouldn't be a problem, but we'll try to work with the cellular folks and see if they can boost up some of the sites there if we're going to have that many people there. It was pretty amazing, nobody had much cell service down there. We had a couple of issues with the dunes, traffic afterwards. We're going to take a look at that to make sure that doesn't recur. And the fireworks enforcement, I was talking to my fire department colleagues and I think they reported three fires, two of which were related to fireworks. So I did get some calls, I did get some emails. I know the council probably got a couple about fireworks in other parts of the city and even down in our safety enhancement zone. We're going to take a look at that to see if we can do a better job on that. We've done a real good job in the last several years, getting to a point now where we're getting more comfortable and heading in the right direction. I think we need to pay some attention to that and that's to the firework problem. And quite frankly, I'm going to ask, as this year goes by, we're going to really lean on the community to help us with that because we can't be everywhere and the community gets out and loves to have their block parties with the kids doing the fireworks in certain areas that we can't get to on a frequent basis. And that, that's a problem and it's a fire hazard and it's illegal. So we got to look at that and see if there's a better way we can deal with some of those issues as we move forward into next year. So next year, what to look ahead? Can't wait. It's Friday. It's going to be interesting to see what brings, what it brings on a Friday. We're going to take a look again at Seashore to see if we can come up with an alternative plan, still keeping that open. We really like to have all the streets open. The command post will no longer be at the old city hall, we're going to have to find another place. We have an idea of where we're going to have that. One remnant of the old cordoning off of the Seashore, the light trucks and why we had those. We're going to get those light generators, we're going to, we're not going to have those anymore, there's no need for those, which is a good sign again, heading toward that day that we're not going to have to work so hard on the 4th of July. And then as I talked about, the fireworks and the traffic issues, dealing with other parts of the community, we're going to take a look at as well. So we think it was a successful event. I hope you did, too. Certainly, the community had a big part of that, as well as all of the departments, and we're looking forward to next year. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? Mr. Hen.
Well, I'd just like to add once again, my thanks to Police Department and Sean didn't give himself a bunch of kudos, but Parks and Rec has played a real leadership role along the way, too, in helping us with this change over the years. And so I just can't be more thrilled about how things are going and very much appreciate it. I did, as we're thinking about changes for next year, we did get some complaints about the lack of trash pickup on Saturday. And my understanding is that we're going to change that this coming year and that we will be having trash pickup on the Saturday. And so that's important. And other than that, thanks. It was just, it was really well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, job well done. And I would agree too. I think these statistics do point to the fact that we are making some very significant and measurable improvement in the whole atmosphere during the 4th of July. And I think everybody ought to be very proud of that accomplishment. Public comment on this matter, please come forward.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is George Schroeder and I'm a 25 resident in West Newport Beach. I actually, I've been monitoring the 4th of July for the last 25 years because I own rental property down there and my family does and I have clients who do. I always run my bicycle every 4th of July from 26th Street up to 53rd Street, take pictures of all the bad behavior that goes on. I brought pictures to this meeting in previous years to show you, to help you understand what we live with. I'm happy to say this year I didn't bring any pictures, I even stopped taking pictures before the day was even half done. And I guess at the very top, there's a lot of people to thank, but at the very top of that list, I want to thank former mayor and current council member Michael Hen about three years ago. He did call a meeting to plan a family-friendly 4th of July. And that's when pretty much the culture changed that my tenants and friends who live in the areas with kids, they did not have to leave town or stay inside and lock their doors. So I want to thank Councilman Hen for kicking that off. And I think all of the residents are very grateful and happy how that turned out. And then also, I want to say for years and years, I would come to this meeting and I would say, the problem we have is that we have huge magnets bringing all these people in. We have 50 or 60 huge party houses where it just walked down Superior Avenue, it looks like a sea of humanity with, you know, 20 for packs of beer. And the police kind of just, you know, keep them in the lot and they manage them. So finally, a few years ago, we came up with the Lugo ordinance and that changed it like, almost like night and day. The first year, 16 Lugos were given out. If you asked me on July 1st, where would the Lugos be, I would have probably picked most of those 16 houses. And it isn't because I remember what they did last year on the 4th of July, it's because I remember what, I see what they do on Saturday. they do on Saturday nights. In August, in September, you know, I'll come home at 10:00 at night, and there'll be 30 or 40 people on the patio with a keg of beer, just behaving inappropriately, because they don't care. If the police would come, and they're likely fined for $100 if they didn't care. Okay, so, once they got the Lugo, the sign was on their front door for 90 days, they had to change their behavior. If a few people got Lugo themselves, they could not go two blocks over and party, because the sign basically, the mark was on them. So, the culture changed. I will say that I do think the Lugo citations matter a lot. And also, I do have to, you know, I just want to get this out there. The police department and everybody, they have 100% my support. This was the best year-over-year improvement ever. And I was going to say, it's about a 25% or 30% improvement. And just looking at the party hall complaints, they're down about 35% over last year. So, that pretty much backs up, that it's a 35% improvement over last year. The fact that the crowd dispersed early and left, usually at 10:00 at night, I'm on Balboa, it's a sea of humanity. At 10:00 at night, I didn't see hardly any people at all. People could come and leave. But, I think that we need to give Lugos out when they have bicycles on the sidewalk, they have 30 people on the patio, the police can't tell them, bring it down.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your remarks. Any other speakers? Please come forward.
Mayor Currie and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I also would like to congratulate the city staff on a successful effort and their coordination with the community. In the presentation, Sean mentioned a grassroots citizens committee that had done a great job putting together the parade in West Newport. I just wanted to remind you that since 2002, the council has also had a formally-appointed July 4th Newport, West Newport Safety Planning Committee. It still appears in the clerk's roster. You reaffirm the appointments to that as recently as this last January. But, to the best of my knowledge, they haven't met since last year. So, in considering the success of all of this, you might be, at some point, wanting to give some direction to staff as to how you want them to coordinate with this committee, or perhaps the committee is no longer necessary. But, anyway, I wanted to remind you of its existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
I'm Richard Bergstrom. I'm the president of the Newport Marina Homeowner Association, and also in the committee members for the changing of this friendly or Newport. I just want to say, I can remember, three years ago, coming here, and we were all complaining about the problems, and the unruliness, and the property damage we were having. And this year, I can tell you, our homeowner association is really grateful for the transformation that's taken place. And while I certainly take a great deal of pride in what the committee has done, I also have to take my hat off to the police department, because I think that is as big, or is bigger than what we're doing, and how they're handling these situations, and how much stability they brought. So, we appreciate it, and I especially appreciate the ability to come down here, hear what happened, and what the plans are in the future, because it helps us on the committee now, plan for what more we have to do to help this transformation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down. Any other public speakers? All right, seeing that, we'll close public comment, and say, congratulations, job well done, to all involved on the city staff and in the community, who helped make this a very successful effort this year. We'll now move on to the next item, which is the overview of the facilities financial planning program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here today to present an overview of the facilities financial planning program. And my objectives here today are to help define what exactly is the facilities financial planning program, what the facilities financial planning tool is, what that difference is, what the purpose of the annual review is, what's the process, and is the plan affordable and sustainable? Now, the facilities financial planning program is essentially a long-term plan to fund the construction and renovation of important community-serving facilities. These include parks, community centers, fire station libraries, and the police station. Now, we use an Excel-based model used to incorporate a number of variables, including the project cost estimates, project timing, and cash flows. It's a living document. We update the assumptions very regularly. And then, we meet with finance committee. In this last year, we met with finance committee three times to review the facilities financing program. Why is it important? The city is 107 years old. Reinvesting in the community keeps our facilities looking young, and better able to serve the community. It helps us make sure that projects are properly prioritized. It provides a basis for a level budget funding plan. And, it ensures that future generations won't carry a disproportionate fiscal burden for previously completed projects. Now, there are two main governing documents, council policy F-28, which is the facilities financial planning program, as well as our debt management policy, that sets certain parameters about what is good governance, and that they be reviewed annually with council. Also important to ensure that the goals of the plan are in alignment with council vision, and allows for further citizen input. I won't go too much into the policies, but the policies are available online at the link below. The process, in a nutshell, is we look at the priority projects. We review them in relationship with the key objectives and constraints of policy F-28, as well as the debt management policy. And, given the expected developer contributions, we determine how much additional general fund contribution and/or debt that may be required to fund the program. Again, staff regularly reviews the assumptions. It's reviewed, again, with finance committee. Council reviews it, and it's another opportunity for citizen input. So, the projects we're currently looking at, and the future, are all cash-funded. This includes Marina Park, Sunset Ridge, the Fire Station 5, Lifeguard Headquarters remodel, and then looking forward into 2015, the West Newport Community Center, and Fire Station 2, and even Benito Creek Artificial Turf. In the not-so-distant future, we're also looking at funding Fire Station Number 1, and the police station. The police station, at the moment, currently, is requiring a little bit of debt. But, even then, we think there'll be sufficient developer contributions, or additional general fund contributions, to even eliminate the need for further debt. So, when we look at the past resources required, when we're looking at the 30-year funding horizon, 24% of the plan was dependent on future debt proceeds in order to do the Civic Center. Now that we're past the Civic Center, only a very small portion, as I mentioned, remains that may require additional debt financing. And, we're very hopeful and confident that we may not need any further debt financing. So, thumbnail sketch, I won't spend a lot of time on the slide, but over the 30-year planning program shows the sources and uses over that period. And you can see, in addition to funding, cash-funding the projects, paying the debt service on the Civic Center, we still have nearly $91 million of additional savings that would be set aside for future projects. So, the key metrics of the plan, we are limited by our debt management policy to not exceed debt service, shall not be more than 8% of our revenues. And, we're going to maintain a balance in the facilities financing plan reserve that is greater than the maximum annual debt service of $8 million. So, when we look at the actual statistics, the minimum balance that we're keeping is 9.3 in the facilities finance reserve. And, our debt service is well below our 8% threshold. The maximum is 4.9. In over a 30-year period, our annual debt service is approximately 3.7% of annual revenues. So, we're in very good shape. So, when we look at this debt capacity, where we are in 2014, and the difference between what our debt service is, and the 8% max, we could, today, issue an additional $81 million if we needed to for additional projects. And, as I mentioned, our hope is that we won't have to issue any additional further debt. So, when we look at the cash flows related to the FFP reserve balance, you notice that there's, we're hoping to refresh a significant amount of facilities in the near term. So, you see a little bit of volatility through 2021, after we finish the police station. And then, we see we're going into a large savings reserve, where we'll be setting aside nearly $91 million for the next generation of buildings that will need to be replaced. So, in conclusion, I would say that, you know, the city is investing in its future while maintaining a very safe community. We know that cities that don't invest in their facilities see costs rise, and property values fall, and more. As we recently reported, our assessed valuation increased 5.21% in total. And, our security property tax actually increased 5.7%. And I think that's reflective of many of the investments that we've chosen to make over the last year. The plan is in line with the best practices of the credit rating agencies, the nationally-recognized agencies of Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and Fitch. We believe the plan is affordable and sustainable. And, the city has maintained a AAA rating, which, as we note, is the highest rating by these agencies throughout the recession. At this point, I'm open to answer any questions, or we can preview any of the specifics of the model, if you have in the package.
I think the important takeaway from this is that, having completed the Civic Center, and provided this facility here for the next four generations of Newport Beach residents, we're now able to add two very significant parks, Marina Park and Sunset Ridge Park, to replace some fire stations that need to be replaced, to make some further improvements in our library system, the Lifeguard Headquarters, Big Canyon Yard, and within the decade, our police facility, all essentially on a pay-as-you-go basis, because we have used the correct mix of debt and cash to really transform the entire infrastructure of the city. And that's what keeps us a strong place with high property values where people want to live. So, I'm very pleased with the results of this. It tells us that we can, in fact, move forward. Of course, had we not sold the debt for the Civic Center at a time when the federal government pays 35% of the interest on our bonds, that money, and we paid cash, that money would have been gone, and we'd be talking about the debt issue that we had to do now, to do these other essential projects. So, I think the plan has worked as designed. It's produced good financial results. It's allowed the city to build a strong financial reserves, more than $118 million. So, I think it's worked very fine. Are there any questions for staff?
Sure. With property tax being, I mean, just a steady workhorse over the years for us, what are the projections, let's say, 10 years out, on our property tax? I mean, we're going to have some more valuation occurring. Where do you see that in 10 years?
Boy, I wish I could answer that question. 10 years out is a long time. I think the city is a, has a strong potential. I only see, you know, although markets do see cycles, I only see good things for Newport Beach.
Is there any timeframe you could give more specific numbers?
I would think property tax cycles move in roughly 10-year cycles. Is that correct? If I could refer to Nancy Gardner on that, how often markets tend to swing?
What are you asking me for?
I don't know.
All right, let's ask Mike Hen. Mike, give us your best crystal ball here.
Well, you know, if you want to look at cycles in the residential real estate business, you know, we had a very severe downturn in 1982, another one in roughly 1990, '91. We had another one, it was a long time before we had another one, you know, and that would have been 2007, '08, '09. So, there are cycles, and 10 years is as good a number as any, to be thinking about that. I guess I would just follow on to that, though, with a few other thoughts, if you don't mind. I am absolutely convinced that Newport Beach is one of the best-planned cities of any city in the state of California. We have a water and wastewater master plan that we execute against faithfully. We have a streets and highway rehabilitation plan that we execute against faithfully. We have a key facilities plan we execute against faithfully. We, all of the fundamental purposes of government in this city, I think, are extraordinarily well-planned. We're also blessed with a strong revenue base in this city. But, that's not an accident. We have a strong revenue base in this city, because property values continue to go up. The latest report on the assessed valuation, where Newport Beach's increase led the entire county with over a 5% increase, that's no accident. It is because this city has regularly, and continues to, invest in itself, to improve itself, and refresh itself over time. And that is what's called a virtuous cycle. We invest to improve in the city, property values go up, that gives us more opportunity to invest even more in the future, and so on, and so on. There are plenty of cities in the state of California right now that are in a vicious cycle, where it is a downward spiral that they're trying to reverse. And so, those that would say, "Don't spend the money," that's exactly wrong. We need to spend the money and invest to make our city better. And along the way, we need to manage our city efficiently, so that the amount that we do have to reinvest can be maximized while we still maintain very high levels of service in the city. So, this facility's planning tool, which is very actively managed every year by virtue of Dan's comment, that the finance committee looks at it on a regular basis, every single time, we have a decision of significance regarding the key facilities in this city, we vet it through this tool, to make sure that, as well as we can, looking into the future with the crystal ball, we're making good decisions that we won't regret five years, or 10 years down the line. And so, I think it's just tremendous. I congratulate staff on being so diligent in maintaining this. It's not easy. It's a very complex tool. I would like to make one other comment. You might have noticed in here, a very significant component of our financial resource for this plan comes from developer fees. That's despite the fact that we're in a city that's 90% built out. That's no accident either. And, I just have to say, Councilman Ed Selich, and partnering with him before he left council, Steve Rosansky, have made a huge impact for the betterment of this city, with the work that they've done in negotiating these developer agreements and these public benefit fees. Those are things that'll redound to the benefit of this city for many years into the future. So, again, it's a good thing, what we're doing here.
I'd just echo that, too. I think through Councilman Selich's efforts... I think through Councilman Selich's efforts, what is it, I think, one hundred and thirty million dollars in general benefit money was brought in, which is just fantastic.
Any other comments before we open up to a comment? Mr. Hill?
I would just like to reinforce once again, I think it's, to me, it's a team effort that has put us in the place that we're in today. Before I came on the council, the council had the wisdom, I don't know if they still have it or not, soon they do.
Wisdom's been diminished since you came on.
Yes, I also lowered GPAs, but that's okay. The council had the wisdom to enact a strategic financial plan, and that strategic financial plan called for a balanced budget each year without touching reserves by making structural changes in the delivery of service that retained or improved the quality but reduced the cost. And that allowed more funds, because we conservatively projected revenue, to go into reserves, which helped fund the facilities plan. The combination of the strategic financial plan and the facilities financial planning tool, which is really the process of council policy and the city manager's office and staff's ability to implement that policy, is what makes this city have the financial strength that it enjoys. And so I think that as long as we can keep this process up, that we have a significant future regardless of the real estate economic climate, because we've just come through one of the worst recessions in the history of the country, and we did extremely well. There's no reason why we will not continue to do extremely well. Very pleased with staff's ability to implement these policies of the...
Mr. Patrus. Mayor Curry, my father always told me, "Don't break your arm patting yourself on the back." But I would just want to echo the comments of Mr. Hen, and also point out that it, there has been some correspondence to me and to others that would allude to the fact that the council is behind a ballooning increase in the budgets. Budgets have risen by hundreds of percents. If that means that by virtue of the reinvestment in our community, the values that are rising in property, that sales tax receipts are increasing, that stays in our hotels are rising, and TOT is on the increase, absolutely. And I would be proud to be behind that because that is proper stewardship of that virtuous cycle and the reinvestment in our community. Others have also said that we spend, and I would also say, yes, we do. We spend appropriately to reinvest in our community, in parks, in infrastructure, in water, in wastewater facilities. We do that for the betterment of this community. In the recent state of the city, Mayor Curry, you encouraged us to look at great cities, not just being one of thirty-four, thirty-five here in the county, but to be a great city. And to do that, we're looking at art. We're looking at art in public places. We're looking at supporting that. And that is a cost to us, an expenditure to us, that will come back to us in increased values in this community. So if anybody wants to try and make that a detraction, if anybody wants to make that a criticism, I say, join me here at this council chamber. Join us at the Finance Committee meeting and learn how we steward your resources. Learn that, in fact, about twenty-five percent of the funds that are available to us do come from those development fees that were negotiated out by members of this council. Come and join us. Become educated in this process, and you, too, will be amazed at the proper stewardship of those resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor Curry. My name is Jim Mosher. I had two comments. One, in the presentation, we saw a slide showing a number of projects that are in the current facilities finance program. And the spreadsheet that is part of the staff report shows additional projects. Some of these are already beyond the current budget year, some of these are much further beyond the current budget year. And I think it might be helpful for the public if you could clarify the extent to view which you view this plan as a commitment to those particular projects in those years, or just a demonstration of what could be done but might be done differently. And the second comment, as we did here, and the staff report spreadsheet shows that we do have this debt service on the City Hall, bonds, or COPs, whatever you want to call them, extending for many years. And as I said, I'm totally ignorant about this, but I would be curious to know if those are structured in such a way that we have an opportunity to pay them off early at less cost, at a time when we find ourselves flush? And if those are not structured that way, and if we found in the future unexpectedly a need that we did need to issue more debt, whether that can be issued prudently in a way that could be paid off earlier so that we're not left with this service over many, many years? Those are my two comments. Thank you.
You? Any other public comment? All right, another job well done, and we will now move on to the identity theft discussion.
Good evening, Mayor Curry and council members. As is on your agenda, Councilmember Gardner's asked us to put on a presentation on, a brief presentation, on how to protect yourself against identity theft. I've asked Sergeant Keith Crollman, who is our supervisor in charge of our crimes against persons and economic crimes detail, as well as Andy Query, our crime prevention specialist, whom we all know and love, to give this presentation to you. But before I have them come up, there's one thing I'd like to comment. Sergeant Crollman's commander, or Division Commander's here, Captain Johnson, since he and Deputy Chief McGill are both here, I wanted to take a moment to publicly thank them both for their work on the Fourth of July. What you don't know, you saw what Deputy Chief McGill talked about and what happens down at the peninsula. From the police department standpoint and from our operations standpoint, we have two major functions that we manage for that day. One is the, what happens on the peninsula, which Deputy Chief McGill was our instant commander for. And then we had Captain Johnson, who was basically our instant commander for the rest of the entire city. And he, by the way, has done his time in the bucket handling the peninsula as well. So he handled the rest of the city Fourth of July. Both of them did an outstanding job. I wanted to publicly acknowledge that and thank them. But I also want to acknowledge that Captain Johnson, if you don't remember, he was the one that actually brought this Lugo ordinance to us, I think, three years ago. He brought that to us from Arizona, I think it was Phoenix, where he saw that. He flew back to Arizona, researched it, and brought it to us. Obviously, you approved it and passed it. But I want to thank you for that because I think it's had a tremendous impact on our Fourth of July. So I would be remiss if I didn't thank them for that before I ask Sergeant Crollman and Andy to come on up.
Chief, I assume by that introduction that you took the day off on the Fourth?
I was stressed out, but I couldn't relax. Honorable Mayor Curry, council, and city staff, my name's Keith Crollman. I am sergeant, as the chief's just introduced me. With me is crime prevention specialist Andy Query. So we're going to talk a little bit about identity theft, what it is and what you need to know and maybe protect yourself. Identity theft is basically someone who steals your identity or personal information. Personal information can be your driver's license number, your social security number, credit card numbers, your checking account information, branch routing number, using it without your permission. And it causes a tremendous havoc upon your credit report, your finances, and your reputation. People go online, they use it in person, and anyways, has negative consequences on your report. Thanks. As I said, they steal your information. These are just a couple ways. These people are very clever. Some of them are intelligent, some of them are not so intelligent. But some of the ways, as we put up here on the screen, they go into trash, and they get your financial documents that way. So if you own a business, your own individual IRAs, your monthly banking card statements, so on and so forth, they go into trash, what they call dumpster diving. Some people call you up on your telephone line, and they will trick you into giving you information over the phone, posing as a certain individual or organization, winning your confidence over and you trusting them. A simpler way is simply taking your wallet out of your unlocked car or stealing your property from your house. Also, skimming devices. Those are computer devices that are placed upon, most common way here is at a gas station, the regular fuel pump station, and you put your card in it. They have these little magnetic skimming devices, and they read your credit card information and they get your passcode information using those devices. In other ways, pretend to offer a job or a loan or apartment to get your information. And reoccurring trim recently with loan modification companies, certain people that these loan modification companies hire are of questionable character, and when people go to refinance their homes, obtain lines of credit, again, get your personal information. So reducing your risk.
Okay, so I'm going to kind of cover some of the things that you can do to prevent yourselves from becoming victims. And then if you have become a victim, hopefully identify those early so that you can find a solution to it and clear it up. So basically, protecting your identity should become a habit. You should be always checking your accounts. We'll go to the next slide. The best way, though, that you can kind of keep a bigger picture of what's going on financially for you or with your identity is to get a copy of your credit report. And by law, you're allowed to get a copy of it free from each of the reporting companies and so, or the credit card reporting companies. And so what we suggest is that you spread that out over four months. Every four months, get another free copy from one of the other agencies, and so that you can keep that cycle going every year. Take a look at it. Make sure that you dispute any charges that are, any reports that are incorrect, and get those taken care of quickly. But that's how you're going to identify if somebody possibly in another state or has purchased a home or done something that's not quite as local in your local finances. We do see oftentimes people having their wallets taken, and within that same day, somebody's already used the credit cards. But this, you want to keep an eye on your credit report on a regular basis to see if any of those accounts have been opened. So looking at your credit report, the sergeant also recommended how, or also suggested how that dumpster diving people can look at your accounts. Well, let's make sure that you look at your accounts just as carefully. So every month when you get those statements, pay attention to your bank statements. You should actually, like I mentioned routinely, be doing this possibly on a daily basis. Charges to your credit cards or to money withdrawals from your bank accounts, those can happen quickly. Myself experienced identity theft, and with one week, they had managed to take out three thousand dollars out of an account because we checked ours weekly. So that's changed how we do things in our lives now. It's a daily occurrence. So keeping on top of that, look for charges you don't make, follow up with those. Also, be alert, if your bills don't arrive on time, that you're expecting a bill. And so maybe you might want to consider online payments, just so that you've taken out the chance that you might lose your bills in the mail to identity thieves. What the identity thieves do is they take those items, and oftentimes, if they can gather enough information on one individual, they will contact that person. And what we've seen happen in the past, if they get your phone bill and your Visa bill, they might give you a call because now they have your home number, ask you, "Is this Mr. Smith?" "Yes." Right now, I want to just verify that you don't have any fraudulent charges. We've seen some suspicious activity on your Visa account. They read off some charges. Those are legitimate charges that you have made because they're actually looking at your report or your account information they stole out of your mailbox. You say, "Yes, that is in fact, those are legitimate, there's no fraud." And then sometimes they slip in there, "Just for security purposes, can I get your mother's maiden name?" And you're kind of taken off guard, and fortunately, we've had people in our community fall victim to this, and then they give the suspect that one key piece of information that allows them to commit fraud or open up additional accounts. So making sure you're checking those on a regular basis, just so something like that doesn't happen. So the other really important piece of information that we all have is our social security number. And so making sure that that's just not given out to everybody. And over the years, things have changed, and you don't necessarily have to provide your social security number to everyone. But on a lot of old forms, that was traditional, that you would fill that out. So when you go places, they will ask for your social security number. Verify what they need it for. If they don't really need it and it's just on there because it's always been on there, then just, you know, ask not to give it. In some cases, they are definitely going to need it. But when you do provide it, confirm with them how they are securing your information. Because a lot of times, laws have changed, and now they are required to secure it in a much better way. But I would verify what they're doing with that information, how they're securing it.
Do you have a good strategy for establishing passwords, like more passwords? Everybody wants a password. How do you manage that so you remember things as well as take good precautions?
Okay, I'm probably not the best person to ask that because it is very hard. They're ever-changing. But you do have to be creative. You should use numbers and letters and even symbols, whatever you're putting into allows. But make it something that you can remember. And then maybe as you have to continually rotate them, as we're now doing, adding just several digits to it so it's going up just by one. They do suggest that you have, you don't use the same password for everything that you do, although it's difficult with all of us. We have so many different ones we have to keep track of. People write it down. That's not a good idea. People stick it right next to their computer at home, also not a good idea. But try to make it something easy enough that you can remember, but be creative as well. So I don't have a perfect answer for that, Councilman. Let's go. Okay, so keeping your personal information, I already discussed how when you give out your information, you want to confirm that they're keeping it secure, but what are you doing at home? Sergeant Crollman referred to it, residential burglaries. After the burglar's, first place that he typically goes is to your master bedroom to look for jewelry and money and things like that. If they have time, the second place that they will go to is your office. And of course, they're looking for financial documents there, tax returns, credit cards, anything that you might have left out, bank statements, or don't have secured in a locked drawer. So I suggest that you keep these things secure. First, ideally, keep your house secure, but then internally within the home, keep those secure. Keep your property secure as you're driving to and from your work location. We have lots of people leaving vehicles unlocked or purses in plain sight, and so we'll have theft from vehicles. And oftentimes, we've had briefcases taken, and there either could be client information, which then somebody commits, can commit identity theft, or your personal information. So keep your items secure and with you at all times, and at home, keep them secure, and at work, keep them in locked and secured locations. We mentioned the mail. We have had recent thefts of mail, and I can't say if those have resulted in identity theft cases, but I'm sure that that is kind of the goal. Either they're looking for instant cash or checks or something. But most of the time, that's why we do have a mail theft. Shredding your sensitive documents, and also don't overshare on social networking sites. And by oversharing, I mean, a lot of times now, some of the things that these companies are asking for to, you know, they're not just asking for your mother's maiden name anymore. They might ask, "What was your favorite pet as a child? What was the streets that you grew up on? Who was your first aunt?" Or, I mean, all these different kinds of questions. Well, on social media, we tend to share a lot of information. And if somebody was targeting you for identity theft, they could go on, and if it's open, they can find out all those answers that they need to answer those questions to establish accounts or to get into your account. So be careful on social networking, what you share. And then Sergeant also referenced this, the online offers, where you get the phishing emails where it looks like it's your bank, and they're asking for personal information. I get a lot, I'm sure all of us do, that they're not from our bank, or we know they're not legitimate because we don't bank with that person or invest with that person. But the email looks very realistic. So if you get an email, even if it's from your bank and they're asking for personal information, they don't do that. If you are concerned that maybe something has changed and they are trying to reach out to you, then don't click on that link. Make sure that you take that information, you punch in that company's name in your browser, and you do a search for that customer service contact, and then you either email them or just pick up the phone and contact them and see if, in fact, that outreach was actually So once again, with technology, it creates all these other problems. We talk about actually keeping our hard copies safe, but now you also need to worry about in the technology age, somebody getting into your computer. And if you are storing your financial information in the computer, are you keeping the things in place like antivirus software, spyware, firewalls, everything that you need to help prevent a hacker from getting in and stealing your financial information that way? Councilwoman Dagel had mentioned the strong passwords and doing something to remember them. The strong password is what we're seeing now on a lot of the sites. It kind of tells you whether or not you have reached a strong password, but then, once again, it's remembering that one. So create strong passwords, but something that's easy for you to remember and not easy for somebody else to figure out. And then keeping your computer system up to date on the browser so that you're not getting unwanted entry into your system. And we talked about, the other thing you want to do is encrypting, using, make sure that you're... that your data is encrypted, so that it's scrambled when it's going back and forth. And then also, when you're out using the Wi-Fi at the coffee shop or someplace like that, be aware that that's open. Now, if you're at a secure website, or an encrypted website, your communication back and forth with that website will be scrambled, but any other information is open. So you need to make sure that you're using a secure server when you're operating out like that. So keep that in mind. And I think that might be... Oh, no, one more, one more. So the other thing is, there's obviously no way we could cover everything, because there's so many different avenues. And every time I do an identity theft talk, people have new stories for me, or the way they were victimized, and what they're doing to try to clear up all of their paperwork and their financial situation. All of the information that we presented today was from the Federal Trade Commission, which provides a variety of information. So we did provide you with a handout. One of the items in there, it talks about the use of, if I can find it here so I can show you, the use of the identity theft protection services, like the LifeLock and things like that, because we always get questioned, are those, you know, worth getting? It's basically a service that can do for you what you can do yourself, but you might not be able to take the time to do all that. But all the things that those places will do, you can actually do yourself. There's also a handout in there that talks about wire fraud, because we are having a lot of wire scams and wire fraud. Basically, anytime you're asked to wire money, definitely not a good idea. So that information is in here as well, because that's the other item in conjunction with the identity theft that we're seeing a lot of victims.
Mayor Curry?
Patrus.
Two things. One, Ms. Brown, I'm wondering if the material that the police department has provided is really, really good, and I'm hopeful that we can get this on the web, maybe as part of the study session agenda items, because this really is good stuff. You spoke about technology as it relates to the personal computer. Can you comment at all on skimming devices? And I understand that that technology just keeps leaping forward in terms of folks being able to go after that. I realized inadvertently, one, New Year's, that while I thought I was sitting in the privacy of my own home, I was actually skipping down the Mexican coast, buying gasoline and all kinds of wonderful things to the tunes of tens of thousands of dollars. And it came off of a gas station. What can we as, you know, patrons of gas stations, supermarkets, debit card machines, what can we do to help limit our exposure there?
If you look at the terminal itself, just make sure it's free of any type of debris or any other type of material inside of it. It's usually very thin, magnetic. It's attached, it almost looks like the pump itself. They come in different shapes and sizes. All I can tell you is that if it looks odd, I wouldn't use that pump itself.
Yeah, the other bit of advice I'd give you is, and this is so unfortunate, but consider using cash. I mean, I know all of us have gotten away from that. But I did actually have a resident in town that he actually had his gas card canceled because he had been a victim three times, and the company would no longer issue it. It was only used for gas, and that's where it had been compromised. So cash is, that's the safest way, because nobody can grab your information that way.
Mayor?
Just more greater.
This came about because of a conversation I had with a woman. And part of what I wanted to learn is, what is the role, if any, of the police department? Because here you're saying, which is a great screen, I'm glad to have this information, when you contact the FTC. They had come, which I think would be normal, you think a crime's been committed, and so you come to the police department. And they walked away with the sense that was like, this is really not something we do as much, or that we referred to it. It did get settled, fixed up, but, so are you the people to call, or not?
Absolutely. And it doesn't matter whether you're a resident, you're a victim of identity theft, and you're a resident of Newport Beach, or you live up in Sacramento. If you become aware that your identity has been, or any personal information has been used against, without your permission, you can go to any law enforcement agency and file a report. That agency in turn will investigate the crime and forward it on to the appropriate jurisdiction. Now, that could mean another county, or another federal law enforcement.
Let's emphasize that, because I think that's what happened, was it was referred to another jurisdiction. And maybe there needs to be a better explanation when that happens, because as I say, they, it did get straightened out, but they were surprised. And so, I pass that on.
These crimes are layered, they're convoluted at times, and when they do cross different jurisdictions. But we certainly reach out to all the people that file a report at our agency and let them know where it's going. We usually provide them with feedback in a cover letter, letting them know what the status is.
Great, thanks.
And real quick, let me just stress the importance of making that crime report, because the crime report allows you some other options. It also allows you to kind of do a little bit of investigating yourself and retrieve items from some of these different companies. It allows you to put a fraud alert on your credit, your, I can't think of the name, credit...
Score.
Score, your credit report, your credit report. So what that allows is, that means that companies, if somebody attempts to open an account in your name, they have to first verify it with you. You can also do a credit freeze on your account as well. But all those things take that crime report, so that allows you some extra things as well. So no matter what, people really should be making a crime report with the police department.
Mr. Hen?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Andy for all the work that she does. I have no doubt you give dozens of presentations every year, maybe hundreds, I don't know. But I know you've given presentations to the homeowner associations in my district, more than one, and for each of them. And so I appreciate it, and I appreciate that the police department is trying to be proactive about getting the word out on this.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, thank you all very much, and I know I'm expecting some money from Nigeria, and as soon as it comes in, I'll be able to make some of these upgrades. Thank you. Is there any public comments on this matter? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comment. Once again, a good job. Congratulations to a great, great staff work and an excellent presentation, very important and timely to the public. Final item is public comments, including public comments on items on the closed session agenda. Is there any announcement before this?
We'll be meeting this evening to discuss labor negotiations, as well as threat to public services and facilities. One thing we're going to do a little different this evening, we're actually going to be considering the threat to public services or facilities here in the main chamber. So once we finish with public comment, we'll be asking everyone to clear the room, so that the council can have that discussion here, as opposed to in the conference room where they normally have it.
Okay. Any public comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Curry, and members of the council. I did want to comment on that, because as the city attorney just indicated, the closed session agenda indicates that Chief Johnson is here not only to introduce his personnel for their presentation during the study session, but to speak to you, it says in the agenda, a threat to public services or facilities, apparently so sensitive that you have to discuss it behind closed doors. And I know some people, at least, in fact, some reporters, seeing that, thought that we had some kind of imminent terrible threat against our city. I suspect that's not the case, because this was published last week, and had it been a really serious imminent threat, I would assume you would have had an emergency meeting about it. And the Brown Act has, since I think about 2002, allowed you to hold these sessions, and the scope of them is fairly broad. So I would just think to alleviate public concern, there might be some way to give some indication of what the general nature of what it is that you need to discuss might be without revealing the specific threat, if that was at all possible. That's my suggestion and comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we're adjourned to closed session.